Well, hello and welcome to St. Thomas the Apostle Episcopal Church and to our Lenten luncheon series. We're really glad that you're here with us. I hope that you have gotten yourself a little sandwich or a bowl of soup or salad or something and sitting at your desk or sitting at home and gathering with us so that we can have our conversation together. Today, I really want to welcome, I'm really, really thrilled that we have with us, Janay Hanslick. She is our county commissioner here in Johnson County in District Four. She is a licensed social worker and is the former CEO of Safe Home. She also happens to be an Episcopalian, so we get to claim her. Janay, I'm so happy that you're here with us during such weird times.
It is.
We are appropriately socially distanced here, we've measured. So really happy to have you here and thrilled to hear from you the response from the county, your take on all of this madness that's going on right now.
Sure. Well, thank you, Kelly, since we are in the midst of daily, if not hourly, changes in regard to the COVID-19 situation. And so I'm thrilled to have the chance to come and talk to you and give you an update from the county perspective and from what's going on metro-wide also in response to this situation. And I'm going to say, this is what's happening today. Tomorrow, things could be a little different, but I wanted to talk about, first of all, the county in this situation really has four major priorities. The first one, of course, is public health, the community's public health. And we've seen that through the stay-at-home order, except for essential businesses. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But secondly, it's to ensure the continuation of essential county services. And these might be things you don't think about as county services, but they include things like Med Act, running the jails, the courts, our mental health centers, and our human services and aging services. So those are things we can't just stop because of this situation. The third major responsibility of the county is, of course, to protect the health and safety of our county employees. A lot of people don't realize that Johnson County government employs over 4,000 people. And in fact, the county is one of the largest employers in Johnson County. So all of these decisions have to be made with their health and safety in mind also. And finally, the fourth issue that we have to take into consideration during this situation is the financial oversight of our county's budget. Right now, we're all very uncertain as to the impact on the economy, the impact on what our financial situation's going to look like going forward. And I'll talk about that a bit, too. But going back to protecting the public health, hopefully, all of you are aware of the emergency order that the county passed, the county commission passed last week that advises all people, orders all people actually, to stay in their homes except for essential services and activities. And that decision is made really by Johnson County's public health officer. His name is Dr. Joseph Lemaster. And he has authority through the state of Kansas, under Kansas law, to make these kinds of decisions. So I want to make that clear. This is not a county commission decision. We didn't get together and decide this. This is a medically directed decision that comes from our public health officer and that we are bound by law to follow his guidance. In terms of continuing essential county services, if you go online to the Johnson County government website, there is a special webpage about COVID-19. And there are lots of different tabs there, but one of them is providing updates on the various county services. For example, libraries have been closed. In fact, please don't even try to return your books. They've all automatically extended your due dates and you will not be fined. So from that kind of situation, all the way to their questions about people who have court-ordered visitation with children, how is that going to work? Please, please look at that website for information on specific county services. I wanted particularly to mention, for example, Meals on Wheels. The Meals on Wheels home-delivered meals are still being continued. However, there's a few changes. Rather than a daily delivery, there is, at the present time, a weekly delivery of frozen meals so that people have those for a few days. But don't worry, staff is still calling on those folks, calling them by phone to make sure they're okay. Because we know, in addition to the meals, the other important part of the Meals on Wheels program is that contact and making sure those folks are all right. The food pantry through the multi-service center is still open. However, you have to make an appointment to go in. And in fact, if you go online, there are lots of food pantries that are in Johnson County. And you can look and see what they have done to respond to this situation. But most of them are still available, but they want you to make an appointment. And I've had a lot of questions from people about, well, what about mental health? Especially being cooped up at home is difficult under the best of circumstances. But for someone who may be also struggling with a mental illness, what help do they have? Well, please be assured that all outpatient services are continuing through video or phone. And of course, we have the 24-hour mental health crisis line, which is 913-268-0156. So I can tell you that I have been so incredibly impressed with how our county staff have dealt with this crisis and looked at how can they best continue those services for people who need it. And that kind of goes along with what I had said about the importance of protecting the health and safety of our county staff. Those who can are working from home. Those who still have to work come into the office, perhaps to answer the phones or do some of the work that can't be done at home, or practicing safe social distancing and sanitizing. And so that certainly is being practiced. And then in terms of financial oversight of the county's budget, the county financial staff have already started looking at ways that we can cut back. We are cutting back right now in terms of putting a freeze on hiring new people at the county level. All of the departments have been asked to suspend any purchases or expenditures that are not absolutely necessary. We were supposed to, last week, at the county commission, look at, perhaps, seeking bonds for a new public health building. We've put that on hold. So there are a lot of decisions being made with the intent to protect us from any unnecessary financial impact that we can control at this time. Now, in that same regard, earlier today, I'm a member of the Mid-America Regional Council Board. And we had a meeting earlier today to talk about what's happening metro-wide in terms of the COVID response. And again, I'm very impressed. We have had systems in place and they are working. And that's why we've had them in place. The hospitals, regional hospitals, are working together through Homeland Security. And we know how many beds are available. There's sharing of products and needed supplies, which, by the way, there's constant need for more personal protective gear as well as sanitary supplies. If anybody out there has stocked up, let's just say, on, for example, Clorox wipes, I know that we need them desperately. Our Med Act folks need those desperately. So if you are interested, please contact the county if you have some extras because there are folks that their health depends on it. But one of the things that we talked about at the Mark Board this morning was that we're looking from a regional standpoint in terms of potential financial impact and looking at what we are doing now. For example, small businesses can contact the SBA, the Small Business Administration, to get some assistance with the impact on their businesses. I've had a lot of questions from people about, well, what about federal funding? When are we going to see that? I wish I could tell you. What I'm hearing is that the legislature, the federal legislature, is getting closer to an agreement about federal funding. But at this point in time, the county, we have not seen any of that and we don't have any specifics on what that's going to look like. The other issue that a lot of folks are asking me about is vulnerable populations. What are we doing for folks who can't stay at home because they don't have a home? They're homeless. And yesterday, I was on a conference call with about 22 people who are members of the Human Services Coalition here in Johnson County. And these are government entities and some other nonprofits who are working together to make sure that there is a safety net in place. And on a regional level, we just found out yesterday that under the umbrella of the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, the many foundations in the region have come together and have put together a grant fund specifically for emergency needs during this time. And I just had an update on it earlier today that the goal is $10 million. And I think they're very close to having that much in that fund. And there will be more information forthcoming on how social service agencies and other agencies can apply for that funding so that we can get immediate funding to those organizations who are providing those services, food, shelter, and medical care, like Health Partnership Clinic of Johnson County, to be able to allow them to continue to help not only the folks they usually serve, but increasing numbers of people who are unemployed. I was going to also mention and talk about, a little bit about, the statistics. Right now, in the United States, we have close to 45,000 confirmed cases and about 544 deaths. In Kansas, we have 82 confirmed cases and two deaths. And I think, as many of us know, one of those deaths was here in Johnson County and another was in Wyandotte County. And to date, Johnson County, of all the counties in Kansas, has had the most significant numbers of cases. And of course, those are only the cases that have tested positive. We don't know how many more are out there that we can't verify without testing. But one of the things I think is really interesting is, you know, we've heard a lot about how our older folks are especially vulnerable. But when you look at the age distribution of the 36 confirmed cases in Johnson County, it's actually all across the age spectrum. And actually, the median age is 46. Not to bore you with statistics, but we've had no cases of children 0 to 9. There's been one case of someone 10 to 19 years old, five cases, 20 to 29, six cases, 30 to 39, eight, 40 to 49, as I said, 46 is the median age, five cases, 50 to 59, four cases, 60 to 69, five people between 70 and 79, and two between 80 and 89. So I say all that because, do not think because you're younger that you are immune to this virus. It's actually quite frightening. I wish it were limited to one group because then we could possibly figure out how to particularly protect that group. But when we see that it's across the board, I think that also is more reason for us to continue this stay-at-home order for 30 days. I know that at the federal level, we're hearing, well, maybe we can be done by Easter. And, you know, maybe healthy, younger people can go back to work. Well, what we're seeing in Johnson County is not bearing that out. Anyone can be afflicted by this virus. And finally, I wanted to mention that there are two very, very important phone numbers that I want to share with you all. First of all, the county has set up a COVID-19 hotline particularly for health-related questions. And this hotline is being staffed actually by school nurses since they are not in the schools right now. And we're very grateful to them.
Excellent.
And it's available Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that number is 913-715-2819, or CV19.
Nice.
And that's for health questions, if you have concern. Obviously, if you are experiencing concerns, please call your healthcare provider. But this is for, especially for things where someone may want some guidance on how to sanitize an area, or if they are concerned about, they're not sure, maybe, if they should call their health provider.
Right. It's allergy season. There's lots going on. People get worried. Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
And then the other phone number that's really important is related to the stay-at-home mandate and business closures. And that phone number is 913-715-5000. That's not the number you should call for health-related questions, but for business closures and those kinds of questions, 715-5000. And again, that's currently, it's currently 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'm not sure if that will stay at those hours.
And that's for businesses themselves to say, you know, should we be open? Should we close? Or what kinds of questions are they fielding there?
It can be anybody. It doesn't have to be a business. For example, questions, I've had questions that I've directed there about, can golf courses be open?
Ah, sure.
Or is it safe for me to walk in the parks?
Ah, got it. Okay.
Those kinds of things. Or I'm concerned. And I think these are going to kind of die down as people get their questions answered. But questions about, is my business an essential business? Or I'm buying a house. Can I still move ahead with that? Those kinds of questions. So that's kind of an overview. And I know that you had some questions, Kelly.
I do. I do. I put some questions out on Facebook to people. So these are questions that were submitted from Facebook. And I'm grateful that you are willing to answer some of these. One of the questions that I got was the question of, you know, if we're hearing one thing from the federal government about, you know, potentially by Easter, policies changing and things like that, how does the county respond? What authority does the federal government have versus the county, versus the state, versus the city?
That's a great question. And according to Kansas law, as I had mentioned, our public health officer has the final say. And at this point, we do not have any plans and we have not heard any word from our public health officer that we should do anything different than what we are doing. Doesn't really matter what happens at the federal level. Our local emergency order is for people to stay at home for 30 days. And until that would be changed at the local level, that's what will be in place locally. It would be great if we could change that more quickly or sooner. But at this point in time, especially with everything we're hearing, I do not anticipate that that's going to happen.
I think generally, people will go through their life and never know that we even have a public health officer, which is a good thing. That's a good thing.
Yes.
They're not in the spotlight, usually.
No, not someone who wants to be famous.
Is that a position that is, it's not elected? They're appointed by the commissioner?
They are an employee, actually, of the Johnson County Public Health and Environment, or Department of Health and Environment.
Okay.
And our public health officer is named Dr. Joseph Lemaster. Very, very impressive background. And as I often say to people, I am not a doctor. I am not an infectious disease researcher. And nor do I want to pretend to be. And so I trust and follow the guidance of our public health officer. And I think that it's really, really important that we all do. Some people have said, wow, 30 days, that's a long time. What's going to happen? What's the impact on the economy? What about businesses? And I completely understand that, believe me. It's a very, very difficult decision to have to say, yes, I'm voting in favor of that. When I understand it can cause great hardship for people. At the same time, as I said, our public health officer is saying there could be potentially much greater impact on the life and health of our people if we don't do this. And my fear would be that we'd have a lot more economic impact and a lot longer-term financial issues if we don't do this now and more people get sick and more people die. We can't get this time back. If we don't do something now and we don't take this action now, we can't turn back the clock and try it again. We've lost that opportunity. And we've seen that in other countries that if they haven't kind of taken the bull by the horns and done something when they could, they can't go back.
Right.
I think I had told you earlier, Kelly, that my hope is that people, when this is all over, will think that we have overreacted because that means people are safe.
Right.
I'd much rather have people accuse me of overreacting. I'll take it.
It works.
I will take it if that means people are safe.
When do you expect widespread testing to be available?
You know, I wish I could tell you.
I don't know.
In fact, just before I came over here, I was talking to one of our assistant county managers. And I asked him that question. And I said, I think I know the answer. He said, yeah, the answer is, we don't know. We don't know. I wish we could know. Now, that is something we have to wait from the federal government and from other sources to come in.
Okay.
I would say, though, about testing, I want to remind people that the instructions are still the same, whether you're tested or not, to stay at home, call your healthcare provider. So whether you're tested or not, you need to be following those same protocols.
Right. Right. Very good. This is a little more personal question instead of job question. How does your faith impact your community involvement, your decisions, that kind of thing?
Well, I think, you know, I originally became a social worker because I believe that that is our directive to follow the example of Jesus, that we are to care for people and care especially for the most vulnerable. That's what Jesus did. And to me, that just made sense for me to do that. That's what I was taught and that's what I read in the scriptures. And so that's what I've done my whole life. And then moving into my work at Safe Home with victims of domestic violence, the same thing, that showing people that they are loved by God, that they are worthy of a life that is filled with peace and not violence. And when I felt I was led to make a change in my life and leave Safe Home a couple of years ago, I really had not planned to run for office. But a number of people that I trust and respect came to me and said, you know, there's nobody right now in the county commission that has a background in human services. And when we're dealing with issues like mental health, aging, human services, we need somebody who's had experience like yours. And so I had to give that a lot of thought and prayer because it really was not what I thought I would do. But to me, I tell people, I'm a social worker. And right now, I am serving as a county commissioner. But I'm always a social worker and I'm always a follower of Jesus. And that's how I look at my work. And I trust God to lead me where I will be led in the future. May, who knows? I've constantly been surprised where God has led me, places I would never have imagined.
Funny way of doing that, yeah. And then, so in that journey, then, how would you say being CEO of Safe Home prepared you for what you're dealing with now?
Well, as I'm sure you can imagine, at Safe Home, dealing with people in life-threatening crisis practically on a daily basis, but also as well overseeing a staff of 80. It wasn't a staff of 4,000 at the county. But having to think and think about the financial stability of the agency, I think being in that role at Safe Home has allowed me to be able to have that broad perspective in this situation, that realizing I have to think of multiple implications of moving ahead with, of course, the health and safety of our community being the number-one priority.
Right. Right. I have just a couple other sort of business-y questions. One person asked what efforts the county is using to try and divert cases away from hospitals, like confirmed cases away from hospitals, so that they're not being overwhelmed. Are there systems in place for that?
Yes, absolutely. And first of all, no one wants to divert people from hospitals who need to be there.
Right, right, right.
First of all, we don't want people showing up at the hospital without having called first so that they can be screened and triaged to make sure that they're going to the right place. And I mentioned I was on the Mark Board call today. And one of the things we were talking about is they're constantly looking at the availability of beds in the metro region and in Johnson County, looking at if the worst would happen, what are some alternative care centers that could be put in place? What are places that either are already set up for healthcare or could be set up for healthcare? But I think at this point, the main thing is, if you are having symptoms, to call your healthcare provider and let that person make the decision if you need to be hospitalized or not. You know, I wouldn't want to give anybody the impression we don't want to hospitalized people that shouldn't be there. But I think, as we all have heard too, the hospitals and medical providers are cutting back on nonessential surgeries and trying to do, I know that, we've heard that Governor Kelly has made some changes to regulations around telehealth. so that to make that a little easier, uh so that people don't have to necessarily go into the office to have
Right.
a service. Uh so so trying to make sure people get the medical care they need, but not necessarily have to come in in person if if it's not absolutely necessary.
Good.
And and I mentioned too, not I mean, a big part of that is uh reducing the use of those uh personal protective equipment, the PPE, because there just isn't enough right now.
Right. Um and then uh someone did ask about um the any efforts the county is making to relieve the tax burden. Um that is something that is, you know, under the control of the county commissioners. Is that is that on the table for discussion?
Well, ye- yes, absolutely. And that's absolutely one of the the major responsibilities that we have is looking at what what's going to be the impact of our current situation going forward and what what will that look like to the county budget? Because as I mentioned, we the county has a lot of essential services that we have to maintain. We can't just say we're not gonna provide Med Act anymore and those kinds of things. So but uh really looking at what are the things that can be reduced. One of the areas we've been really concerned about is sales tax. We've we've had some less than uh expected sales tax revenue. And now with stores closed and we're looking at what's the impact gonna be on sales tax revenue. Uh we know that we're we need to look for ways to cut county expenses uh without giving up those essential services. Now, how far will need to go on that is remains to be seen, but the county is certainly looking at that. We have we have things in place right now. Uh asking departments to put uh look at contingency plans so that we if as we know more, we we have options. So yeah, absolutely, that is a critical part of what we've been looking at.
Okay. Last question. What would you say to your fellow Johnson Countians? To Americans who are scared right now?
I would say that's certainly understandable. Uh scared, probably uh we're all uncertain right now. Uh but I can I can say that I feel very privileged because I have the opportunity to see kind of behind the curtain, all of the things that are going on and have gone on at the county. The the staff that we have at the county is top-notch. These are folks, our our leadership, our county manager, Penny Postock Ferguson, our assistant or deputy county manager and assistant county managers are among the most professional, knowledgeable people I've ever met. And they are working with our department heads. And it it I feel very, very um secure in the decisions that they're making, the things they're putting in place. Uh they 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 are looking at all of these different aspects and addressing them. And then from the regional level, we, as I mentioned, we there are emergency processes in place and they've been there just for this very reason. So I would say even though it's it's a frightening time, we have to trust the experts. We have to trust those people who are uh our health, public health officer, those people who are experts in infectious disease, who have studied this, they know the course of this. We need to to hang in there and not prematurely step back just because we're anxious. Uh we have to hang in there. It's kind of like people tell you with the stock market, don't take your money. Leave it in there, hang in there and ride, you know, they they're we we may be in for more uh difficult times uh in the next couple of weeks. But short-term pain will be worth it if we can avoid a a disaster. And I feel very, very uh secure that our our county is making good decisions to avert and and flatten that curve and keep us all safe. But we need everybody to do their part and to to observe those those uh those stay-at-home orders. But and and also, you know, we know that we're not in charge. That's why we are people of faith. That's why we have uh other people that with which we can uh share our anxiety with with whom we can pray. Uh I would, on the me- at the end of the meeting today, uh the the Mark Board meeting, our our president uh said, you know, if you are a person of faith, please pray. Please pray that this this virus will end and that people will be safe and that we can deal with the the impact of it. So I I would say now more than ever, turn turn to your faith community, even though we can't be together uh in in a group, we sure can be together in spirit and
Virtually.
and online, just like this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So
Absolutely.
I I think we, I think, uh uh as I said, I've I I have been so impressed with our community and our community and county's response. And and feel very, very um grateful that we've we are where we are. So, thank you.
I wanna thank you for not only coming here and talking with us today, but for your uh leadership and taking that on, feeling that call and and stepping up to take on that um role of being a a servant leader for the people, a public servant. So thank you for doing that.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Um we are uh grateful that you all joined us today. Next week, on April first, we will have our bishop coming to talk with us about this uh crisis and what that means for her and her faith. And she will have words of hope uh for us as well. So thank you again and God bless.